Good evening. I'd like to call the November 6, 2025 Planning Commission to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Post.
Here.
Commissioner Carlson.
Here.
Commissioner Hawley.
Commissioner DeYoung.
Here.
Commissioner Schober. Commissioner Weber.
Yeah.
Commissioner Tugle.
Here. Can I move to excuse Commissioners Schober and Hawley?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consideration for approval of tonight's agenda, a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And consideration for approval of our October 2 meeting minutes as printed, unless there are any changes.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. This is the call for public comment. If you have comments that you wish to make to the Planning Commission, please come forward and limit your remarks to three minutes and identify yourself, and we'll be all ears. Craig, item eight. I believe this gentleman is here for the Mary Avenue.
That's correct.
Will we entertain public comments at that time?
As to church's discretion, do you take public comments now, or during the gen item?
Why don't we wait until we're on that item, if that's all right? Okay. Closing public comment and moving to a public hearing. It's 7:03. We're having a public hearing to consider an amendment to the Fairiesburg Zoning Ordinance, Section 7.70, Design Sign Regulations to Permit Ground Signs for Non-Residential Properties in the RD, RG1, RG2, and RG3 zoning districts, and to amend Section 7.70, District Sign Regulations to revise the term "pole sign" quote-unquote to "freestanding sign" quote-unquote for consistency in the ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, this is a fairly simple ordinance amendment. As read, this would allow for non-residential uses within residential zoning districts to have identification signs. So this would cover non-conforming uses, so commercial uses in residential districts. It would cover churches, schools, and then other non-residential uses that may need a site identification sign or a wall sign. So we've just added in the term "non-residential uses" in the row in the table, and then stated that there could be one per non-residential lot or parcel. And then, as you mentioned, Craig and I did notice there's one slight inconsistency throughout the ordinance concerning pole signs versus freestanding signs, so it's kind of a housekeeping issue just to change the word "pole" to "freestanding," because that's how it's used in other parts of the ordinance.
Thank you, David. Questions, Commissioners? Okay. All right, so public comments on this issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at 7:05, and move to discussion and take action, if appropriate, to recommend to council to approve, excuse me, to adopt or not adopt an amendment to the Fairiesburg Zoning Ordinance, Section 7.70, District Sign Regulations to Permit Ground Signs for Non-Residential Properties in the RD, RG1, RG2, and RG3 zoning districts, and to amend Section 7.70, District Sign Regulations to revise the term "pole sign" quote-unquote to "freestanding sign" quote-unquote for consistency in the ordinance.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. To recommend that council adopt?
Yes.
Yes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Craig, did you get that?
Yes. Thank you.
Do we, would anyone like to discuss this before we go to a vote? Okay, it seems pretty straightforward. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so we've sent on that recommendation, Craig. Okay, item eight, discussion and take action if appropriate. A request filed by Dennis Dreyer, Dreyer Architect Group, on behalf of Brian Klingel to construct a driveway that deviates from the regulation of Zoning Ordinance, Section 3.160, by constructing a non-hard surface driveway. Parcel is described as parcel number 700315127048, commonly known as 17585 Mary Avenue.
Point of order. Did we skip over seven?
I think we, we-
Well, we had the public hearing and then-
Yes. We, chop, chop. I would just like to mention that there was a late submission from the moving party, and did everyone get a chance to see that? Craig, could you describe what you sent out just a couple days ago?
There was a letter from Mike Walker, lives at 17555 Mary Lane Avenue, opposing a request to have the-
No, no, I mean, there was a- Excuse me. I thought it was a late addition to request a variance for the driveway to be a non-hard surface, to ask that we approve it as a, instead of changing the ordinance, am I, am I-
Recall that?
Well, it's this, it's this sheet that's handed out in front of us, the transmittal sheet.
That's from Mr. Dreyer. He's here, he can explain his mail.
Dave, can you give us any introduction to this before we ask for public comments?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting a deviation from driveway requirements. So Section 3.190 of the ordinance requires that driveways be a hard surface, so that's asphalt, concrete, or brick pavers without voids. So the ordinance does anticipate grid pavers with voids for other types of, like, non-primary driveway surface or for other surfaces. Those, the ones with voids are the ones that have, that can grow grass in between. So they're looking to do that for the primary drive surface. So the request is part of an effort to reduce their total impervious surface on the site. There's been some work done on the site, a great deal of concrete toward the backyard that's pushed them over the 35% lot coverage requirement. So in an effort to try to bring themselves down to compliant level, 35%, they're seeking to remove a portion of the concrete driveway and then install grid pavers with the planted grass voids. So, and that would be about 352 square feet of area within that primary drive surface. They're proposing a product called Turfstone, paper 16 by 24 inches, that'd be 132 pavers total, and this would be about 2.44% of the site. So with this, a driveway deviation request is not the same as a variance that the Zoning Board of Appeals would review. So we have several considerations. They're not standards of approval similar to the Zoning Board where every single standard must be met. So you can use these, but ultimately, it's up to you to decide whether or not the request is worthwhile to approve. So those six considerations, first, that the deviation will not negatively affect adjacent property or significant natural features on the site. My comment in the report said that it, I don't think it will. There might be some tracking of dirt and mud, but there is enough room between the grid pavers and the edge of the street, so that if there's tracking, if it becomes muddy, but not maintained, I don't think it would track dirt and rocks out in the street in some, in other cases. So I think this, I'm not concerned with the first standard. The second is concerning health, safety, and welfare. I don't think it will cause any issues with health, safety, and welfare. Number three is that it will not cause traffic visibility or cause safety concerns. I don't think it will have any issue with traffic safety or any other visibility concerns. Sometimes, some driveway deviations can, but not this one. Number four is the requested deviation will improve the existing parking arrangement on the site. It won't have any impact on the parking arrangement on the site. This is really, the overall driveway will stay the same dimension, it's just the center portion is going to be a different surface if approved. Number five, the requested deviation will improve the aesthetics of the site. And this one, I mentioned that the intent of the hard surface requirement is to maintain a consistent residential character through city neighborhoods. Although the ordinance already includes alternatives and exceptions, primary drive areas, especially on shorter driveways, should comply with the surface requirements. So I don't think that standard has been met. Lastly, the requested deviation results from a unique shape or configuration of the lot or land in that placements of the existing, or placement of the dwelling or garage, or unique circumstance involving the occupant of the property. I don't think there's any unique or exceptional circumstances involving the shape or configuration or the placement of that garage door. The deviation does result from an ongoing code enforcement issue. Obviously, they're looking to reduce that total lot coverage. So ultimately, I don't think that this warrants a deviation, but this is full of your decision, and you can consider all those six standards here the way you wish.
One other question to you, David. I had the opportunity to drive by the subject property, and it appeared to me, without doing anything other than just looking at it, that the driveway was perhaps a couple of inches below the road. And so the idea that dirt from the grass that might grow in the turf area might, in any particular way, find its way into the street seemed a little dubious because the, just visually, it appeared that the house is not up on a hill, it's somewhat lower than the road, just by a little bit. And any comment on that?
I had mentioned in the report that there could be some tracking. You know, tracking is, you know, if it gets muddy, there'd be tire tracks for the street. I don't think it would track anything significant onto the street itself. I think most of that would just probably be caught on site. So I don't think that tracking issue is particularly serious. I do think it's more of an aesthetic issue. So if driveway is muddy, not maintained, and tire tracks between the grid paper area and the street, I mean, it could look a little bit unkempt in a way.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
In terms of the tracking, we've got several of these already in Fairiesburg. I've chatted with Craig a little bit about it, and granted, they probably weren't approved, but they're installed and for driveways as well as for boat storage. And all I see in between the concrete is grass. I don't know, I don't understand what you're talking about with tracking.
Well, so the surface itself is, so it's a 16 by 22-foot section. So in some cases, you see it to where there's an impervious or pervious strip between the wheels. But in this case, the car would be driving directly over the grass, and voids are going to be enough to grow grass in. If there, it could be a case where, because this is used for the actual drive, primary drive surface, dirt and mud, once it gets wet, once it gets wet, can be tracked out backing up and forward. So in our ordinance, does require that, even in the cases where we do allow for permeable surfaces, like if the, for instance, we allow for the exception, if the driveway's 200 feet long, you can do a gravel or crushed stone or other types of material. But even in those exceptions, we still require the hard surface from the edge of the street all the way up to the front setback. So that's going to be the area within the right-of-way, which could be 10 or 15 feet, additional, and then additional 20, 25 feet beyond that. So even where we make exceptions, we do require that closer part of the driveway to the street to be, to be fully hard surface.
I just had a question for you, Dave. So I know that we are looking for 35% lot coverage compliance. So in your report, it said that this chunk of the driveway would have an area of impact of 2.44%. So the current, when I was looking, I was a little confused, because when I was looking back at the zoning minutes, it said that originally, back in July, they were looking for a variance for a lot coverage of 48.6%. So how far off on coverage are they? Is it just this 2.44%? Or are we looking at other concessions that are being made elsewhere, and this is just one component of it? I guess that's where my confusion was.
I think, that's a good point. I don't have the exact calculations. I know Craig has asked for more specificity with the actual, the size of the house. You know, there's some discrepancy between what was provided in assessor's data, and then current sketch versus a previous sketch. So I don't think we have the final dimensions on everything, so-
Okay.
If this was approved, we still have the separate issue of confirming lot coverage. This is an attempt to lower lot coverage.
Yeah.
But we would still need to go through the process of ensuring that this was enough of a reduction to become compliant.
I was just seeing like a 13% difference. So if this is 2.4%, if there were other concessions that were being made, maybe in the backyard, I don't, I don't know, then I, I think I personally would be more willing to look into this if there were multiple concessions that were being made. I don't know. That's why I was just asking, but, okay.
If we could, Danny Dreyer, 220 and a half, Washington. When it came out at like 48%, that included all of the turf and all of the stone. And you take those areas out, and you took out a large percent of it, because there's a large area of stone that's used for containing water. And then the turf itself is pervious. It is not impervious. So the first numbers that came out included all of the turf and all of the stone. So once we got those out of there and determined that limestone and crushed limestone are a different definition than, what's the magic word? Crushed concrete and crushed limestone are two very different things. Limestone holds water and does not, you know, it does not become impervious. Limestone will just bleed water through. So once we got those taken care of, the percentages came way down, so that we can do it with removal of the concrete in the driveway. And making it all work is just a matter of the surface area, so. And I have numbers that are pretty doggone close now to that, to that replacement.
Thank you. I think there's some people who wish to speak on this. This would be a good time for you to come forward and address the commission.
I've been here before. I appreciate the opportunity. Let me come in and speak a little bit. I hope I give a little more than three minutes. I got a little chronological review of what's been going on for the last eight months. It's been more of a marathon than-
Excuse me, please state your name and address and-
Landy Furlough.
Yeah.
17575 Mary Lane.
Thank you.
I'm next to, next to the Klingel property. Let me just kind of go through with this real quick, and then hopefully, if you have any questions, I can answer for you then. I'm here to kind of provide a chronological account of escalating issues surrounding the Klingel property over the past eight months, culminating in a persistent pattern of non-compliance that demands immediate and decisive intervention. Our initial concerns emerged in early April, coinciding with a commencement of construction at the Klingel residence. While I was in Florida still, my neighbor Mike Walker, who was next to me, 17555 Mary Lane-
Point of order.
Pardon me?
I said, point of order. Is this germane to the agenda item regarding the deviation on the driveway, or is this a history lesson?
Yeah. I'm going to ask you to limit your remarks to three minutes and try to be respectful of the commission and be right into the point. If you think, if you think it's best to go over the history, that's fine. I'm not telling you what to say, but just, please try to be concise.
Well, you know-
The reason, not to interrupt you, but the reason is that these people are all volunteers.
Understand.
And we have a specific item on our agenda regarding the driveway and the use of those, of the permeable driveway materials.
We've got non-compliance by the city.
And that's what the agenda item is covering.
The Zoning Board of Appeals made a ruling in July 10. There was an after-the-fact variance that was presented and denied, and that included the astroturf, the hardscape gravel on the side of the house, which has helped flood the neighbors in back of us, the extra pavement concrete that was added to the patio in the back of the house. There are a lot of things here that I think is worthwhile if the, if the people that are supposed to make a decision on what's going to happen with that property, because you mentioned, there are a lot of things that don't add up. Basically, he's at 48.6%. My initial conversation with Brian was, and I'm going off my spiel here a little bit, was when I came back from Florida, the only thing that was constructed for our landscaping was a 25 by 30 square foot area that was cordoned off with 6x6 posts. My immediate reaction was, this is going to be additional parking, because he has limited parking space off of West Spring Lake Road. So I had an opportunity to talk to Brian and said, hey, Brian, come on, let's, let's not, I don't, we don't need parking at, you know, my property line. And I wish that you would continue with grass all the way up to the area that you've got covered right now in gravel. So there are a lot of things, there's a lot of discrepancies as well, because Brian, if you look at the plan that was submitted, they got the square footage of the house at 3155 square feet. If you look at the diagram that was presented by Brian and Mr. Dreyer at the July 10 zoning board meeting, the house is 3990 square feet, several square feet, footprint larger than what the actual house was. So that being the case, if you add in the additional area, he was at 7103 square feet with all the hardscape. Now, if in fact, he wasn't concerned about the astroturf being in compliance or the side of the house being in compliance, and the hot tub going in, why would he have asked for a zoning variance for those, unless he knew that he had a problem? So that was denied. But there's just a lot of things that are going on here that haven't been taken care of. I, after our initial zoning board meeting, I came back in August. Nothing was done. Brian, in that copy that you're looking at with the dimensions of 3990 square feet, you'll notice that the parking spot, he took away and said, hey, I'm going to take that, return that to law. So that was a non-issue. That wasn't even in the variance request. So that, took care of that. But we still had the 7103 square feet of non-compliance. So he has to get down to like 5,040, be 35% in compliance of hardscape.
I'm going to interject here for just a moment. I see that we're trying to consider making a motion to support or not support a driveway deviation, and a lot of what you're talking to us about is kind of extraneous to that. So I'm going to, could I ask you just to sit down for a moment and see if there, is there anybody else here who wants to speak? And we'll consider calling you back if we need to clarify additional.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to talk about this, because there's been a lot of non-action by the city, okay? And there should be somebody, and I think it's Craig, who's got to be the enforcer here. You know, this is a meeting to talk about, you know, this is City Planning Commission, so it's up to your responsibility. If these things are allowed to go through, okay, you're setting a precedent. For anybody else that comes into town here, decides to build something, come in with a plan. His original plan called for 3206 square feet. That was, he applied for the building permit. 3990 square feet, it ended up, plus all the other additions, playhouse and so forth. So, yeah, I'll let the other people speak.
Thank you.
I'm Brian Land. I live at 17584 Williams Street. I'm not on the corner of Williams and West Spring Lake Road. I'm the next house in. So Brian's property, about half of my property borders his. The whole issue that we're really concerned with is the amount of area that he's covering. And it really has to do with that neighborhood. The water table is predominantly high there, and the type of soil there, especially in the springtime, if you get heavy rains, we tend to get a lot of ponding water. And I can tell you that in the springtime, when we got a heavy rain, for the first time ever, what I saw was not ponding water, but actually moving water, not only in the back of my yard, right up against the fence to his yard, but also between myself and the neighbor just to the north of me. In fact, his backyard was a complete pond. I've never seen it that, that much before. And really, the water levels are down right now. So I think the whole reason that we're fighting this is we want him to reduce the amount that he's got, so that, you know, that it's, it's actually draining. Well, doing it at the front in the driveway doesn't, he's trying to play with numbers here. He's thinking, well, if I do this in the front with my driveway, then I'm reducing my total footage. He's not. If you look at his backyard and the playhouse that he's got there, and all the other hard services that he's got there, that's what we're talking about. So I don't like the games that he's playing. I don't think this should be through. I think he should be addressing this to try to get the drainage.
Thank you.
My name is Andrew Ross, 16960 Cecilia Lane, Fairiesburg. I'm really here in support of my good friend Mike Walker, who is a neighbor here of the Klingel property. He's at U of M with some medical care right now, so he couldn't attend. The problem really boils down to this. Your ordinances exist for a reason. The variances should be few and far between. Is nobody from the city checking any of these building sites? I've done major construction projects on my property. I had inspectors. I ensured that all of my numbers matched. Your question, Commissioner Weber, is on point. How much hard surface is there? They're talking about a 2.5% reduction with a variance to your ordinances, which should not get variances unless they're in unique situations. This is not a unique situation. The area that was, they said it was going to return to grass, it's still sand. The area that they have turf on is compacted gravel. The architect says that that is not impervious. There's nothing to demonstrate that. ZBA has already determined that it is hard surface and counts in the hard surface amount. Unless he's got a hydrogeologic survey that shows water drains through that compacted gravel, then it should be considered hard surface, and he's at 48%. So 2.5%, allowing a variance for a 2.5% reduction, when you need a 13% reduction to meet ordinance, is inconsequential. So this, this request should be denied, and somebody from the city should go out and actually get a tape measure and measure the hardscape and see what the determination is. And the owner should be required to bring it in compliance at 35%, as been ordered by the ZBA three months ago. It is up to the city to enforce those things. If they don't, I'm going to build a garage across the street, and I'm going to tell you it's 420 square feet, and it's going to be a 3,000-square-foot pole barn, and I'll know that you guys won't do anything about it, because you didn't do anything- because you didn't do anything about this hardscape issue. So, please, enforce the ordinances. Thank you, on behalf of Mike Walker. Walker Electric.
Thank you, and just following up on, the commission received the letter from Michael Walker and we've all had a chance to read that as well. Thank you. Mr. Dwyer? I'll just say, some of your neighbors seem to be taking you to task for a number of things about the hard surface of the property. But the specific issue with the driveway does seem to be a step in the direction of allowing more grassy service. And although it may not be enough, it certainly seems to be a positive step. And as the mayor mentioned, there are other properties with this kind of driveway. And as Commissioner Slowberg, who could not be here tonight, indicated that she thought it was a reasonable request. But specifically in light of the comments that have been made tonight, do you have any rebuttal that might be helpful to us? Either one of you can.
I can handle the technical end of it. You know, what's pervious and what is impervious, that's the question here. The stone is pervious, it is large stone, we use stone like that in retention basins. Excuse me, the reason we use stone like that is because it holds water and allows it to pervious down later. So that it's storage system. So, is the stone impervious? No, it's not, it is pervious, we use it in retention basins. I developed some man caves and some live work units in Grand Haven. We were not, we could not tie to the storm sewer. Under our pavement is two-foot diameter perforated tile with five-foot high by 20-feet-wide stone, the same type of stone there, and that handles all of the storm water, but we need to slow the percolation down. So that storm, that stand, that stone is used for holding tanks. Okay, the, it is pervious, water will run through it. I mean, you can just keep pouring water on it until the soil stops taking water, it won't build up.
So, this is a question to you and also to the neighbors. In the last two weeks, Fairiesburg has received a lot of rain. Has there been standing water or running water on your property because of?
I have been there a couple of times, but I've never seen standing water, but it hasn't been at a rain or right after a rain.
Well, I.
Well, I.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, my phone buzzes in my ears, that's why I had to turn it off. In the spring, we had.
Just one moment, fellow commissioners, I don't mean to hog the microphone, please, if you have a question.
Please ask.
Yeah, yeah. I'm trying to give a little back and forth between the moving party and the neighbors.
If I could get one more comment on the turf. The turf actually has an irrigation system built into it so that it can wash dog urine and poop away. So it is pervious, water will go through it. There is crushed limestone below it and the crushed limestone will just keep draining. So, it is considered a pervious. Along with the walkway on the side of the garage is a finer crushed limestone, but it's still limestone. But the finer you make it, the less pervious it is. So, when you look at all of the paving and everything that's on the site, yes, it's too much. But, the pervious surface is the turf and it is the stone. And the stone comes all the way underneath the playhouse. Playhouse is elevated three feet, there's three foot of air between that and the stone. The water will run down the stone and get in underneath the playhouse, that has to be considered pervious. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Klingel, do you want to come up and explain these photos?
We can do about this. Do I say my physical address or the address for the house? 17585, I'm Mary Lane.
That's fine.
So the stone you can see that's around the perimeter of the rear, we took in account the watershed. Well, I need to start with this.
This photo?
Yes. The original, the original build of this home was not construct, I was not the builder of it, I hired a contractor to build the home. And the numbers that they're talking about have to do with the landscape designs numbers that were put before zoning in June, remember? Because when Denny came to the meeting in July, it was with the new numbers that were provided before that meeting. So, what we're referencing, that 48% was never done by Denny, that was done by landscape design. And they did it from a drone aerial photo that I shared with them. So they just gave me a ballpark on my lot coverage from that for our request for the zoning appeal. So FYI, that's why that number is so broad, they just did it from a drone picture. Denny was out there with a tape measure. So, the request of having somebody go out there with a tape measure was what I paid for with your work on site, so there's that. Secondly, I don't know if you can tell, but that's the back corner of my property, none of that is shedding. Like, we don't have a high point that's shedding towards the neighbors. This is all flat property back there, technically it's original grade back there. If you notice the fence lines, both fences in that corner, my stone butt's up to it. And if you stuck a level on it, you'd be surprised, it's probably level. And I did two to three inch stone, as you can see with my hand next to the stone. That is eight-foot perimeter around my property. Most people that build houses would build their homes up and do a watershed towards a neighbor. That is not the case with these particular complaints that I'm receiving.
Just a moment.
So what you're seeing is, you can see it's flat, it's flat and it's two to three inch stone. It's not chucking water at a neighbor's house, it's not. And what's really strange is I'm being asked to basically keep my water on my site. And yet, the neighbor to the south of me, which is off Mary, doesn't have any gutters on his house. And if you look from where his house is to the property line, it's eight feet. His overhangs are about two feet. The watershed off his roof is coming off from two stories down and landing on the ground within four foot of my property line. If we're talking about drainage, I've got more drainage coming off that roof than my roof that's shedding left to right. So if you notice, my roof is actually shedding east to west, I've got no watershed that's actually shedding that way. So, the complaint coming from the neighbor to the south is tough because my roofline doesn't, it goes east to west. And I've got gutters. That house does not have gutters, it's shedding water onto my property. That's what I feel. So I'm being told that because of a hard rain that happened in May and there's standing water because of silt in the soil in the area, that I'm held accountable for my house. And it's like, I don't feel that, if you look at those pictures, that stone cannot chuck water. It's meant to retain water on that corner, so.
Just a moment. Craig, Dave, the only issue this evening before us is the driveway deviation?
Yes.
We're not being asked to do anything about the total impervious?
No.
No, so, and that's fair.
Chairman, I did include just one paragraph on the code enforcement issue and the efforts to reduce the total impervious surface.
Yep.
Just for context and background, why they were making this request in the first place. So that was only for background, but the only thing in front of you tonight is, is it acceptable for the grid pavers with voids to be used for their driveway surface? Regardless of why they need them, is that inappropriate material in this situation or this driveway on this site? And if it's something that is acceptable, I mean, we may want to look at amending the ordinance as well to allow us on other sites. It's just, when I look at the standards and the intent of that requirement, my thought was that it was to ensure a hard surface, a uniform look throughout the city. And this may, correct, there may be some other situations where these have been installed. And that could be something that we look at during a zoning text amendment as well. But for tonight, it's simply that, is it appropriate for this driveway to be retrofitted with this type of material?
I'll be honest, as a planning commissioner, I feel very conflicted right now because I feel like we're only given a small piece of the puzzle. And so I do agree with our chair that this is remediating the issue, it's taking a step forward. But I feel like we're not seeing the complete picture. If there are concessions that are being made in the backyard, maybe there's, you know, a 5% coverage issue that's being addressed there later, then I would be very willing to approve this. But, again, I feel like we're not getting the full picture and I don't know if it's coming from the city, I don't know if it's coming from the architect, I don't know if it's coming from the homeowner, but as a planning commissioner, I feel very conflicted here right now because 2% impact, I don't think that's that big of a deal, I don't think aesthetically it'll look wrong. Or I think that he's done a really nice job with the house, I think he's really improved that area. But, yeah, I guess are other concessions going to be made?
Can I share this?
Yeah.
This is, the main reason why we're trying to take it out of the front yard is because of this. When I designed the house, it was actually under a prompting from somebody that was actually in a wheelchair. This house is 100% accessible outside of the mechanical room for a wheelchair. And so my goal with the property was to make sure that a wheelchair could be wheeled from the garage all the way around back into the home. So if I rented, let's say as a weekly rental, or if somebody purchases the property from me in the future, or if something should happen to myself and I wanted a barrier-free home to live in, I thought that there would be an appeal for that. So, taking the concrete from the rear would eliminate the ability for the end user to be able to utilize that backyard space. The front, as far as a wheelchair, if we cut a square out of the driveway in the front, it's less of an impact on somebody that is in a wheelchair because I would assume that someone would pull into the garage and get out of their car and then go into the home. This is the interior of the house, this is every room for you to be able to see. All doors were 36-inch wide. I designed that under the counsel of somebody that is in a wheelchair. So, the bathrooms, the showers, grab handlebars in the showers, all of that was part of the plan. So, eliminating that concrete in the back is definitely something, I hear what you're saying, Ms. Weber? You're, Ms. Weber? But at the same time, if we take it from the back, I'm just a little concerned that it won't work for its intended purpose. I have been asked to just reference something I did do because people saying I've not done anything since July. This is having to do with a completely different topic. But I did remove the crushed concrete that was on the site that would basin water, which we were, which we discovered in our analysis, actually did basin water. So we did remove that from the site and I have pictures of the work being done. And sand is in its place currently for us to either put dune grass in or potentially put grass in in the future. But that's just to be determined. But it will not be a parking area, it's not planned to be a parking area.
Let me ask you to pause for a moment. And the gentleman in the back, would you come forward and briefly make a comment that you've been waiting for?
It's a rebuttal to what he was saying about not being elevated. But when you stand to talk to me in your yard and you're not down by.
Please, please address, please address us.
When he stands to talk to me in his yard, he's not down by my fence, I have a six-foot fence, he stands up. You can see, so you are clearly higher than what I am. So, I'm just telling you, he's not telling you all the story. And I think it's going to be a big problem in the future with water. I've already seen it and I'm just worried it's going to continue. That's the whole reason I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
Let's remember, we're dealing with the issue tonight of the driveway and that's all that we're here for. Not all of the other stuff that's been going on.
And I am.
Yeah, that's not what we're here to do.
I am working in good faith to get my percentages down, but it's tough because I'm working against a number that was never accurate to start. So when I first went to zoning, I should have been smart enough to have Denny do those drawings before I ever made my first request. So yes, if you look at the initial request and the drone drawings, they just weren't accurate. So I'm held to that, plus they were counting areas that weren't necessarily impervious. So I'm going to let Denny take over, but hopefully that's helpful to clear things up, unless you have more questions for me.
No, I'm going to just ask commissioners, have we heard, are we ready to address this or would you like to hear more? For a second time, but, and I just, I think I'm ready for a vote, I just wondered, would we like to hear more conversation on this?
I just don't know how far off compliance he is and I feel like we should know that.
Just before you do, I guess this is a question for you, Dave. Commissioner Jordan is trying to get some sense of, Jordan, I was trying to direct your question to Dave.
Jordan, this is the answer to your question, that's everything. There's five copies of it, if you wanted to pass around, that's what, that's what I. Yeah, but that's what I paid Denny to develop. And I, the aerial rendering from the original with numbers that were not calculated correctly, that is what Denny's been doing for me, so.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I do have a couple of questions. First and foremost, we need to stick on the material on the driveways, right? Denny, if you're able to get this deviation, is that something that's going to put you within the 35%?
Yes.
I guess that would be, I have. Oh, Brian, do you have any photos of other driveways or uses of this product in the city of Fairiesburg?
I'm on my phone. There's one on North Shore Drive, I don't have.
Yeah. That's the one that, that's the one, that's the one across from.
There's two within a block of my house that I was able to take pictures of and send in. So that is, and one approaches a garage perfectly. And it's probably a good run of about 50 feet of turf stone all the way, and that's the one that's on Lakeview. It's a house on the corner of Williamson, Lakeview, it approaches the garage. And so, I know they've talked about channeling it and doing the different things. We saw that that one is pretty much the whole stretch and approach to the garage, so that's why we're trying to just put that slot in the driveway.
And there's, I've been by a house a number of times on North Shore Drive and it's on a, it's on a driveway.
It's in the driveway, yep.
On an angle.
The approach, yep. You come in off from North Shore Drive, it's right by the public access.
And you go up a hill.
It actually, it is, yeah.
It's on a grade.
Well, it's pretty on grade with the road, yeah. So, and I think they use that for that intended use, they were trying to basically tuck a septic tank or something inside of it. There's obviously a reason. But I thought it was unique that it's not allowed in Fairiesburg for driveways and that's exactly where that is. And I'm sure they had to get a special use for that for either a septic or to meet compliance for lot coverage, so, which we're trying to do as well.
Craig, are you aware of any deviations given for this product previously, where it's already installed in Fairiesburg?
There was a ZBA request a couple of years back to have a house built off of Lakeview where the zoning board approved the driveway to be cement where the tires would go and in between, two cement tracks was grid pavers or grass.
And everywhere else that's being used is essentially non-approved uses.
I would have to.
Like that home across from me and Smith's house on Williams.
Yeah, I would have to review those.
Again, fellow commissioners, I'm anxious to move on with our agenda.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we're good, I think we've heard enough, so.
I would like to rebut some of his.
And I don't think it's necessary, I think we're good, so, thank you. So the chair would entertain a motion either to approve. And Craig, is this a recommendation to council or do we approve it and?
It's reapproval by a planning commissioner.
Yes, okay. So, I'd like to see a motion to. Yes, okay. So I'd like to see a, a motion to approve or disapprove the requested deviation for the, for the driveway.
As Commissioner Weber, and you know, seeing this information is helpful and just knowing that we're, the only scope that we're dealing with right now is the driveway deviation. So.
Yeah, and I view it as a step in the right direction of remediating the permeable surfaces. So.
I, yeah, I'm in the same thing. Where I'm like, there's several things that come together and they all relate to the property, drainage, neighborly issues, but for just the driveway, and it seems reasonable and it seems like a good bait effort, that I would propose a motion to approve a deviation from the regulation of the zoning ordinance, section 3.160 by constructing a non-hard surface driveway. The parcel number 700315127048, commonly known as 17585 Mary Avenue.
A second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the table. Any further discussion? I'll just mention that although we are being asked to make an exception, it, it is, from my point of view, it is a step in the right direction to have less impervious surfaces on this property. And there's, I guess, a back and forth of opinion about whether this resolves the issue in and of itself, but it's clearly a step in the right direction. So I, I think it's possibly something that we would want to recommend, to have a further discussion of this, whether we're going to make this a, a flexible stance throughout the city. But just in this one case, it, it seems to be a positive thing. So I would support this motion as well. So if there's no more discussion, we'll call, call the question. All in favor, excuse me, is by, by name?
Will call?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Torgel?
Yes.
Chairman Post?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, everyone, on, on this issue. It's now time to move to the work session on cell towers. David, would you start us off with the, the material that you prepared, your memo of November 3rd?
Chairman? So, so based on, on coverage issues and the effort to improve cell services throughout the city of Fairiesburg, I've prepared a memo which includes a commentary regarding a number of our, our cell tower standards, as well as some, some other factors that I think we need to address as, as housekeeping items as part of this potential update. So this is to address your direction as to consider alternative sites and alternative ways to improve coverage and reliability through the city. So the current ordinance, as noted in the report, the only place that we allow for cell towers over 75 feet is in the LI2 zoning district. So this is near US 131 in Van Wagner Road. And in this location, we allow for towers up, up to 300 feet. There are really no other locations in the city that we allow for towers taller than that. I also mentioned in the report, there, there are two other things that we may want to address at this, this time if we are going to make changes to the ordinance. They have to do with exemptions in the zoning enabling act concerning co-location and minor increases to the height of, of existing towers as well as facilities. So there, there's a paragraph in the zoning enabling act that we should also incorporate into our ordinance just to ensure that we're in, in line with the, the act concerning co-location and minor increases. So that they, those types of requests would not have to go through any special permitting process. We would just allow them as long as they got their building permit. Also, the, the tables that we have in the ordinance, if you notice, there's a, you know, full page tables concerning various heights and districts. And a lot of those have to do with, with general antennas in, in satellite dishes. I think a lot of that can be stripped out of those tables and simplified. And I offered some new alternative text for amateur radio service antennas, as well as the over the air reception devices. And, and that information is, those changes are, are based on, on the, again, the zoning enabling act as well as FCC rules in the telecommunications act of 1996. So that, that's kind of a separate issue that we need to be a little bit more accommodating to, to general antenna use in the city. And so we, we can address that later as well, if you, if you'd like. But overall, the, the general framework for, for allowing a, a new tower of, of more significant height in the central or west central portion of the city to increase the, the coverage area, there's a couple of different things we need to address. The zoning districts where, where the tower would be allowable, the maximum height, the minimum setbacks, the design of the tower, and then maximum number and/or separation. So just going through those, those few items, in terms of zoning districts, I think the, the best target spot is going to be in the LI1 and port industrial properties. So any further west, you're getting into Ottawa Sands Park. If you go north of North Shore, that's all residential or city-owned park property. Really, so really, in my mind, the only reasonable locations are going to be the LI1 zoning district and port industrial. So those are clustered there, south of North Shore. And it, it's generally in the target area that, that representatives were, were showing us on the map. So I, I think that would be the location where, where I'd recommend you narrow down to. Concerning heights and setbacks, so if you saw in, in exhibit one of the report, there, there's no really one single standard for, for heights and setbacks. It really varies across communities. A, a lot of communities put a 200 foot cap. Some of that, some of the reason is because 200 above requires the lighting and maybe that's a, a threshold that communities feel that they want to stay under that so they don't have tall illuminated towers. Other cases, there may be other priorities why they don't want taller structures. But the, if we're going to allow for, for taller structures, I, I would recommend that the setback be the, the same, the same distance as, as the height. So 100%. So if it's a 300 foot tower, you have a 300 foot setback. However, I, I would recommend that we have a provision so that if, if they provide engineering studies or justification that it, the, the tower would, would collapse down on itself or crumple, not anyone just tip over in, in that manner, that, that they could do a 75% setback. Some communities even a lot less if, if they can justify it through an engineer study. I think the, the lattice work type towers are, are probably designed more for that collapsing rather than a monopole. But I include some, some information showing tower heights and the setbacks at 75% and the, and the setbacks on 100%. And then showing the resulting acreage that they would need just kind of in, in that diameter area. So just for, for general context. And I think that some of the properties that are noted in LI1 and PI are, are going to have that type of acreage in order to make the, the, either the 75 or 100% setback. So I think that kind of all works together in a way.
David, do some communities for the, for the monopole, I'm assuming the monopole's the single mast and it collapses on itself. Do they have smaller setbacks for that in some communities?
I would probably defer to-
Compared to a standard tower with guy wires that are out?
I, I think the monopoles are, are, they, well, they're, they're generally shorter, that they're, they're going really up to 200 feet. Most of them I see 150 to 200 feet. But I think those are more designed for, for just falling straight over. I'm not sure if they, they collapse as, as a lattice work or, or other type of tower would. So I, but I, I would probably defer to the, the engineers from, that were here at the last meeting on that. But that's my general understanding. But i- in, in general though, it is regardless of the tower type, it's, it's typically 100% in most communities unless they can demonstrate that it will go straight down, crumple or collapse. So, and, and that, that's a pretty standard type of provision in ordinance. Like if, if they can demonstrate it from an engineering perspective, they provide the reports, that's something that you can consider. That's pretty common to have that in ordinances. Design type, a lot of communities prefer monopole. It just, I think it's got a cleaner, narrower look to it. It had, it's less visually obtrusive than, than lattice work towers or, or guide towers. But then again, if you're going over 200 feet, you're going to need lattice or something else. So as mentioned at the last meeting, they're looking to do a lattice work tower. I think I've heard anywhere from, from 250 to, to 290 feet. I, I, I don't think they were, they were under 300, but the, the number that they quoted were buried in, in two different emails from them. But I think that they're looking for somewhere between 250 and 300. And they would need most likely a, a lattice work tower to do that. So it is wider. There's, it has a bit more of a visual impact. It's not as clean looking, i- if, if that is a priority. So if, so I would recommend that we, we say, you see this in, in exhibit one as well, a lot of communities will say monopole only, but then they also have an exception for lattice work as well, a lattice work tower. So I, I think that would be just fine to include that because we're just not going to have a, a, a monopole that's over 200 feet. And if you need something that's 200 to 300 feet to address this coverage issue, it's going to be a, a non-monopole type structure. Then lastly, concerning the number and separation, a lot of times you'll see separations anywhere like a mile or a half mile between. In this case, we have a, a specific zoned area for towers up to 300 feet in, in our LI2 area. If we say in LI1 and PI, just one tower, that we really don't need a separation requirement at that point. It's just, we have really one location for a tall tower, central, west city, the other one, you know, in, up near Van Wagner and 31. So I, it, I, I think those are all the things that you would need to change in order to accommodate this type of request, if, if this is in fact what we need to increase reliability in the city. Then other than that, I certainly, the, the exemptions concerning amateur radio and co-location, I can answer in questions as, as well.
Thank you, David. I'd like to introduce our representative from the, the cell phone company. Amy, Amy, would you introduce yourself and tell us who you are?
Hi, good evening. I'm Amy Rodriguez with Telecad Wireless. And I work with Logan Phillips who was here last, at the last meeting and had provided you information. So if there's, and if you want, I can kind of provide some information on the collapsing of the towers. I didn't want to interrupt when you were talking.
Please speak into, please hold the microphone.
I'm sorry. Is this better? So the monopoles generally are, they will more collapse over. They kind of fold on themselves is how they're designed. And then the self-support or lattice towers will collapse in on themselves. I mean, there's a couple of ways that they can be designed. Some jurisdictions do have a fall zone exception where if the fall radius is less than the tower, sometimes they allow for variances on that. So I believe that's what you were speaking about with that. Yeah. So, and those fall zone letters are, they come from a engineer, a structural engineer that stamps those letters and certifies the fall radius of that tower.
You've heard the, the discussion from our planning that we're looking to make recommendations. I think we're, at the, at our last month's meeting, we had a number of people speaking to the commission about the safety concerns, that there is just really terrible cell phone service in the western part of the city. So we're trying to see if we can draft some recommendations to council so that Verizon could work with a company like yours to try to secure successfully a, a site for something. Do you, do you have, do you have any concerns with the, or do you have any, I, I think I'm hearing 250 feet, but, and that would be requiring some lighting because of over 200 feet. Do you have any comments on that point?
So generally, the general rule with the FAA is 200, less than 200 feet does not require lights. If it's over 200 feet, it would require lights. So that would be a requirement. The area we work, that Verizon is looking at is on that, the North Shore Road area. And there are businesses there. So it wouldn't necessarily be, you know, right in someone's backyard or, you know, but there, there would be lights probably required if there, if it, there, sorry, there would be lights required if it's over 200 feet. So, and a lot of times they've been going towards the, the red lights more than the white strobing lights, but that is dictated by the FAA.
I have a few comments as soon as that's open.
Yes, please.
Okay. So a few questions that I was bringing up at the last meeting and we were looking at these maps of coverage areas. And then I went on the Verizon website and also looked at some of the coverage areas. And I feel like, I really feel like we need to be very careful as far as where we're placing this tower to make sure we're having an effective coverage range with our topography and everything. If we're going to put a tower in, we need to make sure it's going to solve the problem in the, by the beach. When I'm looking at this coverage map versus the proposed location area, it looks to me again, and I know I mentioned this last time, that it's actually in a pretty good coverage area already. So I, I just, I have yet to be totally convinced that that's going to solve the problem over by the lake and getting over those dunes. So I guess my main question is, in other communities that are similar topography to ours, what type of towers are getting, you know, and what kind of location and what type of height are getting over those dunes and providing service to the lakeshore?
I would have to do a study on where towers are, or you know, that would be something that engineers would have to provide. I mean, I, I don't have that information off the top of my head. So I'm sorry.
Amy, are you familiar with the maps that Logan presented at the last month's meeting?
Yes, and I, unfortunately, I don't have a copy of them myself, but I know they were provided to the planning commission the last meeting. And anywhere that we would find a location that, you know, the property, the businesses want to work with us and place a tower, the RF engineers would provide more specific maps to show the coverage that would be specific to the coordinates of the tower and the antenna height. And they could show you exactly what would be, what that coverage would be specific to those coordinates.
And do you know if the towers, I, I was doing quite a bit of a, a tower search as well. And it looks like there's a tower that's going up at least 800 feet up, you know, by the time of the elevation on top of like Mulligan's Hollow area, by the water tank up there. And so I'm wondering like if that tower is really, you know, 800 plus feet up in the air and it's not servicing, you know, which isn't that far away. And they're also said there was one already on Harbor Island, which I'm not sure is operational or not. So I just feel like those would be things, you know, before we make a ton of decisions of, are, if, are those able, if those are not able to get to the lakeshore, what, what would have to be done to get to the lakeshore?
Well, sometimes it, it depends on the placement of those towers. And it's a pretty specific way they, you know, the engineers are configuring where these locations are because we call it kind of honeycombing where these, the antennas need to fit in to connect to the existing networks. And if they are too close to another tower, there can be interference. And if they're just far enough away and there's a coverage gap, it's going to be a permanent coverage gap because now we can't put another tower in there to, to fill in that coverage. So without doing, having a study done on, on those, I can't speak to if Verizon's on those towers or, you know, what the coverage is from those. But I know they have done the studies of this location and have made it pretty specific of like, if they can get in this ring that they provided, they will be able to, you know, accommodate coverage to the beach and- they will be able to, you know, accommodate coverage to the beach and to the city.
Okay. And I was just, you know, maybe at some point we can get more clarification too, because on Verizon's website, it specifically says that there's 5G ultra wideband all along the beach area. And we know that that's not.
I'm sorry, Sandy. I didn't I didn't hear what you.
We I was looking at the Verizon color coverage maps, and the maps are showing us that we have 5G ultra wideband all along the lakeshore there. So we know that's the just, we know that there's maybe some errors with the map. So we just want to be really careful, I guess is my point.
Consumer friendly for sales is what that is.
Thank you.
The engineers are saying that a 250-foot tower or a 300-foot tower will cover.
That yes.
What they're saying.
And this is an area, one of the things they do to identify that there's a problem in the area is they do get reports on dropped calls. And this area has one of the largest drop calls, you know, records in the state.
Sure. And I've got some residents that I've spoken with that live on this on this side of the expressway that have terrible service as well. It's not just the lakeshore. And that's pretty fairly close to the expressway.
Yes.
Yeah, it's where they're having coverage on this side.
And then in the summer, I would assume it's probably worse just with all the, you know, being such a big tourist area in the state.
My only other, my last comment, I won't take the mic here, but is it ever a common thing? I guess my this question is more directed to David, but since it's kind of frowned upon to have towers in residential areas, do we ever include any kind of buffer where those lot lines are right between the industrial areas and the residential areas for a little bit of an additional wiggle room?
Like a varying setback or separation. There it's not, I guess it's less common, but I think typically it's by zoning district and then setback. But but I think even in Exhibit One, there was one community that had a, I think, a 500-foot separation between residential areas or residential dwellings. So I mean, you do see that from time to time. But mostly I think the setbacks in the location, zoning district location, as well as overall separation, like that half-mile type of separation from another tower. And I think we would have that naturally if we just targeted the, you know, the new area as well as the existing area. You kind of have that type of half-mile-ish separation.
Okay, very good.
Just another thing with the setbacks, it's it's, I mean, it is a safety issue, it is, but it's also a separation issue from residential or from adjacent property owners. It's won't necessarily want to live next to a lot with the cell tower. They want to make sure that there is a proper setback and there's a spacing around it. So I have really good coverage, but you might not want to look at it. So it's a little bit of both when you're dealing with setbacks. So just because it can crumple or collapse, doesn't mean that we use the setback that significantly.
And that being said, I'm definitely in favor of more of the 100% setback, you know, versus the smaller, in my opinion.
So I'll just say, I'm hoping that we as a commission can fill in the blanks that David has provided us and and make some recommendations to council that are practical. And that, you know, if we say the cellphone tower has to be a mile from the nearest house, well, it won't work. But if perhaps it's 75 to 100% of the height of the tower fall zone, perhaps it would fit. And one of the L1 properties that we're looking at could put a tower in that would be far enough back from the residences that are on the other side of North Shore Drive. But we just, from my point of view, we're trying to come up with something that's practical and going to make it feasible to solve the problem. Dave, did you care to address the council on this? Well, we would we would make a, we would allow it if you would care to.
You're a citizen.
Dave Cook, 17605 168th Avenue. My take on the situation is we're trying to accommodate a safety issue, but we don't have enough information as to what type of tower, where's it going to go, what's the setback going to be? The engineering maps and everything I've looked at, they're very ambiguous as to which parcel or parcels could actually work. So I feel like the back and forth is, at this point, tantamount to spot zoning, which is something that's not looked very favorable upon. Just to be more specific, that's these parcels will only work. So I feel like I feel like there's information missing from the conversation. Like Sandy, I did some research. I reached out to Spring Lake Township as well as Ottawa County Parks. And I said, have you ever been approached by Verizon or any other cell towers carriers about this issue? And their answer was no. So at least for the foreseeable past, no one from the carriers has come to any of the communities besides Ferrisburg. So I would say that Verizon, show your cards if you know where you want the tower to go. I think maybe a more direct path would be going to the zoning board and asking for a variance in a specific parcel instead of us passing a very broad stroke over several parcels that may or not may or may not work. The other problem with doing that is you're just looking at one tower right now. If you pass something too broad, all of a sudden you're going to have five 300-foot towers in the same area. They're all lit up night like a Christmas tree. Personally, if I lived on North Shore, I would not prefer that in my backyard, just my two cents.
Thank you, Dave. Dave, could you address the last point Dave Cook was making about if we try to approve something for this particular site? Could that mean that next year there would be a request for another tower in too much proliferation of towers?
No, I don't think so, because what we would do is say within, if in the suggested framework, we would just target LI one and PI and say that only one tower is permitted in both of those districts together. So we're targeting about a one-square-mile area with multiple parcels. So it's and again, I think it's not a spot zoning issue. I think it's actually not because it's we're considering a larger area. So there's multiple properties that could qualify and only one tower. So and that's the way we could write it. And so either we put a number, one tower, or we put a or a distance separation. So but I think the way you could do this to accommodate one tower is to say that specifically, like we have in the current ordinance for one taller tower in LI two. So I sort of think there's ways we can write this to ensure that there would not be a proliferation beyond your comfort level. And I really, I do agree with needing more technical analysis from Verizon in their representatives just to make sure whatever height we're putting in the ordinance is going to not only respect neighboring properties, but provide the solution for the reliability. So I think we do need some more information. I think that's the one missing link. We've seen some maps. We haven't really gotten that deep into that, but I just want to make sure that, you know, if this could be satisfied with a 200-foot tower, I think it should be 200 feet. But if you need 300, well, like they need to demonstrate that that is exactly what we need from a technical engineering perspective.
And Craig, if you could confirm, I believe the city of Ferrisburg did look at putting a cellphone tower in Coast Guard Park. And that you got us, you made an inquiry to the National Park Service, and you were told we could not do that?
That's correct. There's deed restriction.
But do you know anything about whether or not county parks could cite a cellphone tower?
I do not know the answer to that.
Yes, please.
I wasn't working on the project at the time, but in April of 2023.
Can you use the microphone? I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry. I'm not. In April of 2023, another state acquisition firm had been working on this project, and they, is it the North Ottawa County Dunes Park that you're referencing? They were approached and they were, the other firm was working with the Ottawa County, and they couldn't find a viable solution to put the tower in that county park. So they were worked with a couple of years ago.
May I ask a question? Do you remember the reasons of why it wasn't working out?
Don't, because I wasn't working on the project. It was another firm, and it just says that, as was mentioned, the one park has deed restriction issues, and then the county was approached for the proposed tower location, and it was reviewed, and they couldn't find a solution to work with the county on placing the tower in the park. And I will say, I've worked with other counties throughout the state, and most counties don't want them, they don't put them in the parks. So I don't know what the reason was on this one. I could try to find out, but it, you know, kind of like with anywhere, if the property owner or the county, the city, or somebody doesn't want to have the tower there, we we don't have that option.
And the the recommendations that we had before us from you, David, they would not be, they would not enable us to put a cellphone tower in a county park in Ferrisburg because they're not in the in the zoning areas that we're focusing on?
That's correct, unless the conversation directed us to to work with the county park system and to open it up for, I mean, I think there's two different agencies that would have to be working together on that. So I mean, I think if you had a location in the parks, I think you certainly wouldn't need as tall of a tower at that point possibly. And that could also, I mean, I just, I think that's something to where we need to get the facts from the county on are there restrictions there? And even if there are, can they be lifted? And is there any openness to that at all? Other than that, I think really the best bet is to focus in on our industrial area, central portion of the city.
So just to clarify, so I'm wondering if I can get clarification on why a specific site has not been selected? I feel like we're kind of running around in circles, and I understand that maybe there are some missing pieces that we need to fill out. But if we're looking at a general area, and I don't know who I'm asking this to, I don't know who has the answer to that. But if we're looking at a general area, I would think that those parameters are already kind of somewhat created. I don't know if you can answer that or, because you do not work for Verizon, correct?
No, we're contracted by Verizon.
Okay, for the cellphone tow.
Yes, so what we do is, actually, the company I work for is an engineering and site acquisition firm. And we do everything up to finding a candidate and do everything up to construction, and then it's handed off to the contractor.
So typically, a representative from Verizon would not come to this kind of a meeting?
No, they don't. They usually.
I feel like that's kind of where the disconnect, your, your company has been providing all the answers that you can, but then I feel like it's Verizon is the person that we have the questions for.
Well, and I can kind of address why we don't have a specific property here to be discussing. And when we, so the way we kind of, and I'm sorry if Logan went over this last time, but we're given, the engineers give us a small ring to work with usually and say, this is where we need a cell tower, and we need to get coverage here. Then we try, we review zoning ordinances, look at properties that would work with those within the zoning ordinance requirements, and then we approach property owners or businesses to see if there's interest. And the initial problem that we've had, and it looks like going back to 2017 when Verizon first started trying to work on this project, is that there's no exception for height over 75 feet. So right away, we are limited. And the engineers, we, you know, when we talk to them and say, we can't, if you have a 75-foot tower, that means their antenna's center line is going to be 70 feet. So just so they're not going over the top of the tower. And so right away, they can say, in this whole ring, if I can only get 70 feet, but I need 250, you know, there's no, they would have to put up multiple towers. And so that's, and that was the issue, and that's why we don't have a specific property is because to even approach a property owner or business at this point, just it, not to say it's a waste of time, but it's just, we can't, we don't know that there's even a path forward because a 75-foot tower isn't going to fill in, you know, isn't going to give the coverage and provide the service that's needed. So that's why they, everything is general at this point. And once we, you know, if you do amend the ordinance and we can put in a taller tower, then at that point, we would start that process and talk to property owners, see if we can find somebody that is interested in working with us, and then come back to with, here's our candidate, here are the propagation maps that show this specific location. We could even have them that show this at this center line, you know, that shows specifically why the engineers need 250 as opposed to 190. So they can show you the difference of the heights in those maps and show you what areas start missing coverage at the lower, the lower. So it's just, once we have that, we can get real specific with all the information we provide. It's just, I think, so yeah, this does seem a little, this is definitely out of the norm, but it's just, there's not really a good way to move forward if we can't even build the tower at this point. So that's kind of why we're here about the amendment and trying to answer some of the general questions.
That was the most clarity I've ever gotten. So thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Sorry, sometimes I feel like I talk a lot.
No, that was what I needed to hear. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The, I just lost my train of thought. That was the best description of the situation. Do you have a lot of projects where you're installing towers where you go the ZBA route?
Yes. Yeah, and I work, I've been doing this for about 20 years, and I've worked all over the state. So.
And so then that begs the question, why hasn't that happened here?
I believe because it's your ordinance, most ordinances allow for exceptions. So even if, let's say, I actually was at one last week. So I, we had a setback variance that allowed for an exception with a fall zone letter. So the setback was tower height should have been 200 feet, but the way the property was, we could only get to about 180 feet on the setbacks. So we did go in with a fall zone letter from an engineer stating that the fall radius was actually 150 feet. Even though there are ordinance allowed for that, we still had to go to the ZBA because it was an exception. So if there were exceptions to the ordinance, then we probably would have gone that route. And if I'm understanding the ordinance correctly.
And also you would need a specific site with.
Well, right, yes, yes.
Explain the challenges that they're going through now without knowing, you know, what they can go through to get the height that they need. So to get a, to go for variance in the ZBA appeals, we need to know the exact site.
I'm just questioning the logic because Mr. Cook made an excellent point that to just go before the ZBA and say, hey, we want to put a cellphone tower on this piece of property, and we're looking for an exception. And that hasn't happened. Nobody's come to us.
There's also some concern from my part that it would be a use variance. So the use of a, it is dimensional, and the ordinance allows for dimensional variances. But that's in the case where that's typically a setback or some of that nature. But when you have something where a tower over 75 feet is only permitted in this location, I read that more in, to me, it has more characteristics of a use variance than a dimensional variance because it's almost like they want a 250-foot tower. It's only allowed here. They want it here. So that is not allowed here. So it's, you could probably argue either way on that, whether that's a use variance, but we don't authorize use variances in our zoning ordinance.
Good. Very educational from both of you. Thank you.
So I'm wondering if we could. So I'm, I'm wondering if we could fill in these recommendations and consider a motion and, and then continue the discussion with something a little more concrete in front of us.
May I ask you another question?
Of course.
At one point in time, we had seen in our packet, a target location property that seems to be mysterious. So I guess that's my question is, is, are you guys pursuing a particular property?
So, and I apologize because I didn't see, I don't have the maps in front of me. And I don't know if they had pinned a specific property or, because usually what they give us is, here are your coordinates and they will pin that on a map and then say you have a half mile radius. And if you find something in there, then we can review it and make sure it will work. So that could have been what was pinned is not necessarily a specific property, but the center of the search ring that the engineers had given us. I do know we are looking at that south side of North Shore Road because there are some businesses there and then it's not, you know, right next to the homes across the street.
Okay. Because I guess just hearing some more of this conversation, one thing that just kind of came to my mind too, is if you guys were originally, you know, eight years ago, pursuing property at North Beach Park or at Ottawa County, that makes me think that that would be more of the ideal location, you know, closer to the water. So I guess I'm, I just want to make sure whatever we do move forward with, that that is going to solve the problem. That's my, my biggest concern is, is if we're going to put a tower in the city and if it doesn't get service to the people who are asking for it, that's, that's a problem.
And that's where the, once we have a location, we can get you those specific propagation maps to show you that, that will provide the coverage. Also, technology has changed a lot in the last 10 years when they started this project. So they might've even been looking at a couple tow, you know, putting in multiple towers to provide the service to the area where they've, with, they're trying to do a one tower solution here so that they don't have to put in multiple towers to get that same coverage. So that's why they are looking at something a little bit taller because, you know, we try not to go over the 200 feet if we don't have to. And so usually when they're asking for that, that's, there's a specific reason that that engineers have identified.
Sure. So are we talking about doing, just to clarify, because I was like, kind of hoping there'd be a site maybe that we talk about tonight? Are we talking about doing the zoning ordinance tax amendment? Going over the recommendations, talking about that? And then they would find the site?
I, I thought what we were doing is, is making a change to the text amendment, recommending a change that council would approve and that, that would kind of give you the ammunition to, to approach these different property owners and say, the city has approved putting a, a tower in one of these areas and it's a little bit of a chicken or the egg which comes first. But it sounds like from the discussion we're having that nothing is happening right now because currently it's not, it's not permitted and only up to 75 foot for the towers. But if we would agree to make a recommendation to council to broaden that in this specific area, I, I think there's expectation that something specific could, could come, come out of that and that we would be looking at a, a specific proposal once we give them the ammunition.
That's my understanding as well. And then if you did amend your ordinance, I mean, we're still going to go through the whole process of coming back with an application with a property and requesting approval at that point. So I'm not thinking that if you amend your ordinance, we're good to go and build a tower. So we would still come back for planning commission approval on a location with all of the specific engineering documents to that property.
Thank you. Yeah, David, could you take us through the, the blanks that we need to fill in?
Sure. So, so with the recommendations, number one through seven, once we have some general consensus on these, if we do, I can put together a formal language in ordinance format to consider. And then I think once you were able to review that, you could set a hearing in order to then take action and report it onto the city council. So these are really the, the blanks that we need to fill in in order to, to build the framework for a, a new target area for cell tower. So first, probably the most important is, is the location. I had mentioned the LI1 and PI zoning district kind of as, as one collective area. So my recommendation would be to just put LI1 and PI in, in that blank.
And, and that is the sort of industrial area with the, the Buckeye, Buckeye terminals and the Verplank property and a number of light industrial properties?
That, that would open up this area.
Exactly, yes.
But not the, of, of LI3, LI2, which already allows one, that this kind of area, that whole, all industrial.
Thank you.
As mentioned before, that there are three major landowners and there was a couple smaller ones as well, but three major landowners with, with larger sites. I'd say that, that, that those are the only options, but those would be options to where larger sites can, can accommodate greater setbacks and have less impact on residential properties.
Can I ask David a question? So I'm kind of going ahead of myself here, but I see the current maximum in LI2 is 300 feet. Is there a, a reasoning why that was created?
I don't, I don't have the background to, to that 300 foot.
I was trying to look on the map where that was. Is there anything in that area that is 300? I don't, is that where the water tower is?
Oh, it's where the substation is.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Railroad is right there.
Sorry.
The railroad.
Okay. Is there anything that is?
No, I think it was just because it was, the substation was there.
Okay, okay. I'm just looking as we move on to height and I, I just neighboring, I, this was really helpful, these emails and just seeing that everything else is 200. Is there anything that is 250 in the nearby area or higher? I don't remember. You know of anything, Craig, that's 250 in the nearby area?
No, I just picked those three because those are pretty visible when you're driving around this area.
Yeah. This is only 200. 199.
It, it would be helpful, I think, to have an inventory of, of towers within a mile of the city. I, I found a couple of online resources, but it was kind of really cumbersome and like point by point and that you couldn't really, you couldn't, you know, really just plot them all the math. I, I know the site selection companies commonly do that. They, I think they have that, it really at their fingertips, so that'd be helpful if they could provide something for us with, with heights and tower locations. But to, other than that, it's, it sounds like you had the same experience as I did trying to, to find all the towers and, and heights and it's, there's not a, a great resource that's.
Hundred percent. And with, and with the coverage map too, it's hard because it might say that there's good coverage along the lake shore, but in reality, there's, there's not. So to figure out, you know, it would be so helpful for me to know realistically what height of a tower in that range of location would actually provide service over the dunes.
So you would recommend we put in up to 300 feet, the same as the LI2 zoning?
Yeah, I, I think just based on the conversation and, and trusting that the information we've heard from, from the industry representatives, that 250 or, or between 250 and 300 is what they need, I think we could put those in, maybe a range as a placeholder for now or we could, I don't think we have the number that we put in, I don't think we're set on that until we're ready to pass it along to council. But I, I, you know, I'd recommend at least maybe now 250, maybe it's 250 or 300. But that, that, we just put it in as a placeholder for now. Then the setbacks, as mentioned, I think the hundred percent is, you know, makes a lot of sense. You, you could also consider that 75% if it's designed to collapse on itself. But then we, we discussed, maybe, maybe we keep it at 100 just to, to be a little bit more sensitive in neighboring property as well. So even though it might not need a great 100% setback, we still may want a 100% setback. That, that's, I think, a question for, for the planning commission.
So, sorry, just, so just to clarify, for that height requirement, so we're in between 250 and 300. So that's stating that we as a commission are okay with up to a 300 foot cell phone tower in that area, when as of right now, we know that in nearby areas, the tallest ones that we see are 199 feet? Is that what?
Well, the other option is, is we just, we just leave it blank and we, we, we get more information, we ask for the inventory, we try to get some more technical information on coverage and, and heights and we just leave it blank for now. And, and we just know that we are looking for something over 75 feet, but it's probably going to be somewhere in the 200 or more range, but we don't need, I mean, if, if you feel more comfortable just leaving that blank for now.
Well, I'm just one person, so I mean, there's other commissioners. And I do want this, this situation solved. I know that it's a safety concern and that, that would stink if you didn't have coverage near your home. I do. But yeah, that makes me a little hesitant to have a 300 foot tower, but I don't really drive that way, so I won't see it that much, but some will. I mean, I'll go with the group. I just wanted to make sure that, I was just trying to get the consensus from the rest of the board on that.
I, I think when we say 250 to 300, we're, we're not saying it has to be 300. We're, we're expecting that the companies would come forward with a more specific, specific rationale for the, for the recommendation, whether it's 200, 250 or 300. But I, I, I saw us trying to, trying to be more accommodating or whatever the, you know, so that they can come back to us with a, with a workable proposal. And, you know, on the item four and item three, monopole seems to be preferred, but exceptions for lattice would be allowed if, you know, if, if, if needed. And I, I guess that's what I'm thinking with the 100% and 75%. If they, if the site, if the site they have doesn't work with 100 feet, that you, we, we could consider 75% provided there are engineering studies to show that it is, is a safe plan.
Yeah, and one of the other considerations could be that you, you could do 100% on the side that's closer to residential than the other sides could be 75%. So I mean, I think there's different ways we can look at it. So that it's not just a blanket 75 or 100, but it, it's on different location, from, from different lot lines, depending on what they're, what they abut. Residential property or, or, you know, the direct, you know, the north side faces the, residential properties on North Shore, that, that might be where we want to stay close to 100.
I think business, business owners and, and particular housing residences would all want to have assurances that even though Logan told us these things are extremely sturdy, as a commission and the council, we want to do everything we can to look after the public on something as basic as that. I, I jumped, I jumped in there and said, we would prefer monopole, but allow an exception for lattice, just, so I think we're good on that. And then David, the, the question about the number that this would be worded so that there would be one and not potentially five, is that, is that right?
That's correct. And yeah, I actually, I should have had that in this, this final list as well. I did mention in the report, but, but we, we would build that in, so there would just be one. So the table right now has, it says, you know, three of 75 feet, one of, of over 75. So we, we have a similar type of numeric maximum. And I, I would just think one for this target area.
Craig, if, if, if the commission gives David the go ahead to draft this for our next meeting, will that, and, and if, if in fact we approve it at the next meeting, would that get to council before the end of the year?
No, we have to have a public hearing on it first with the recommendations to city council. So the idea right now would be to review the draft ordinance that Mr. Jorsley is going to prepare at the December meeting and then schedule a public hearing in January.
Yeah, I think earlier we had hoped that we could get this approved to this year. Everything takes longer than you think.
Yes.
Do we need, is it consensus of the planning commission or do we need a motion, Craig?
Consensus to direct Mr. Jorsley's drafting ordinance?
May, may I add one suggestion?
Please.
I'm very good with the things that we all discussed. I am strongly in favor of the 100, of the 100% setback for the height of the tower, but also I would like to consider a 500 foot separation from a residential property line.
So I, David, I would just ask you to look at the map and try to accommodate that request, but also try to be practical as well. Like to the extent that the, the properties that we're looking at and the, and the, and the homes, let's try to find a win-win on that.
And I, I, as we mentioned that before, the, the residential separation, I pulled up the GIS map and I was actually taking some measurements from the nearby residences. So I, I can see if we can pull together a graphic showing, you know, anywhere from 200, 300, 400, 500 from, see if we could put like a buffer or something on, on the residential structures just to see how that would look.
That would be great because if it's a 300 foot tower, they're already having a 300 foot setback. So if we add another 200 feet, you know, if there is a residential property line, I think that would be sensitive to the neighborhood.
Good bet.
So I, I think we're, I think we have consensus and we're ready to say, thank you, David, where you've got your homework to do. Thank you, Amy and Dave for chiming in on this. So are we, are we good to go to the next item on our agenda? Okay, this is a work session, accessory dwelling units, personal and commercial storage suites.
Yes, so this is just a quick item. I, I want to just introduce this item as, as just a potential quick fix. We've had some differences of opinion between ourselves and, and the builders concerning of what is an accessory dwelling unit and what is not in a personal and commercial storage suite. So in, in channel side, a lot of those units are, are really well done and they have their man caves, their ADUs, their places to, recreational type spaces. There's a lot of creativity and the idea that, that we originally were looking to accommodate was allow for ADUs in these types of units. We've seen a couple that, that have full kitchens, full bathrooms and then, then spaces above on second floors to where, you know, we'll see on, on the image, there'll be a couch there, but it could, it could be a living, it could be a living space. And just, and my, my concern is that when, when you're regulating, you, you don't want to regulate on what someone's intent may be, you want to regulate what can happen there. If it is living, if it can, if it can be living space, I think it's living space. And our ordinance does say that an ADU must be on, on one floor. And so we, we have these situations to where there's a, you know, bathroom, kitchen on one and, and living space on top. And then in that case, it's, it's not allowable because it's, it's, it's not on one floor. So what we have to tell them is that you can't furnish, you can't finish off that second floor space that needs to stay kind of unfinished storage and you can't really enjoy that and use it. And that just doesn't really seem fair or reasonable. So I, to, to address that issue, I, I think all we would need to do is, is strike the provision that says an ADU is limited to one floor. And that, that would. And that that would be, I I, not really sure, I'm thinking back with the intent of the one floor. Because it's, I think usually we find them on one floor. It's not common that you you see this in a storage unit or on you separate two floors. But there's been so much creativity in in channel side and so I think we should accommodate that. And then second, uh, you, you feel that these should be special land uses. So we we've had uh, these come in for special land use review. We we already go through that type of review for the overall complex. Um, do we, as each individual unit is being uh, you know, upfit and you design for an ADU or recreational space. Do you want to see each individual unit as as a special land use for an ADU? My my thought is that after after doing a few of these, that it's not a great concern. Um, the overall concern is is the overall site plan, the building placement, parking. But when we get into the individual use of those units, I I just don't feel like it's a, it's a major priority to have that as a special land use. That requires a hearing, the planning commission level, and then all the way up to the city council approval of of a small living unit in a storage space.
So the alternative would be to, would would Craig approve it or would it just, would they need to come, would there be any steps at all?
It it would just be an administrative review. So so ye- yes, zoning administrative review of of an ADU.
I I think that's the sense of the commission, but I I just, Craig, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, typical review of Mr. Drozick before we move forward on him.
I think we're good with that. Do you, do you need a motion or?
Are you providing direction for Mr. Drozick? We're good.
Okay, good.
We can pull together the language and and have it for you at the next meeting.
Excellent.
Very simple text amendment.
All right, uh, item eleven, work session, housing.
Okay, um, what type of pace would you like me to go on this? Do you want me to keep it, I don't know, we're pushing nine?
Let's try to go as quickly as we can. I assume everyone has read, read the material. Uh, you you um, you sort of dodged the bullet on um, on uh, on uh, a couple of issues, so maybe you could address the ones you said you wanted to discuss tonight. About the height of buildings in the downtown area.
Sure, yeah, I I can note the questions um, and yeah, there were a few that I just wanted to double check to make sure that we're we're still comfortable with with heights and and others. Um, and then um, another issue, uh, just uh, housekeeping. Is the planning commission interested in in another special meeting just to to keep pace? Would you be open to a me- another meeting this month or or should we just target our our next meet- meeting in December? Um, I mentioned to Craig, I have availability in 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 two weeks, I I think on the Tuesday in two weeks. That would, and that would give me a little bit of time to pull more information together for for, you know, special meeting as well. So I just want, I just want to, we had mentioned a possible special meeting uh, at previous meetings.
I think because we're um, we're seeing, and we, this is some heavy lifting in in my opinion. And and uh, I'm really glad to see a future, future council member sitting in the audience and uh, the mayor here. We're spending a lot of time working on this. I I certainly hope um, we will have a good reception with council and they'll appreciate what we're doing. And uh, we're talking about skipping the January meeting. So I I guess I I'm open to this uh, a special meeting, but I'm, I want to look around the the dais here. And we have two commissioners who are not here tonight, so I hopefully um, if we're open to that and uh, those commissioners are back. And if you have, if you have the ability to meet with us again. Did you say later this month?
Uh, I have availability on on Tuesday, the eighteenth. And and Craig, you said there's there's also a a perks meeting same time? Uh, so that would be, you know, we, if we could work around that, um, I could possibly do Wednesday, the nineteenth. That's less convenient for me, uh, but so the eighteenth or nineteenth.
Should be before six thirty on the eighteenth or?
Well, six thirty, we'll meet and, you know, you guys can start without me. I'll come in when I'm done. It shouldn't take long over there.
We have Kitchell Lindquist on the, on the eighteenth, don't we?
Yes. Probably try to meet at six on the eighteenth or something.
Yeah, well, if the eighteenth is better, I I'll uh, try to be in two meetings at once.
My son will be here for basketball on the eighteenth, so I'll be here. I'll be in the gym or I'll be in here.
So.
What's the start time?
So um, what 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 will we try to finish tonight and what will we try to do on the eighteenth?
Um, well, I I think we we can uh, work through the the memo tonight, just I I can note the highlights and and see if we get hot and cold feelings on 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 certain recommendations here. And then uh, on the eighteenth, we can either continue on this, depending on where we we fall. Um, I I can, I can start working on the final language and and how this actually fits into the ordinance. Or or I can begin uh, the presentations on the the next five or so recommendations from the master plan as well. That we really start getting into residential districts at that point, residential districts and processes.
I I personally, I feel this is a really big, important task that we're doing. And it's comparable to uh, how we had special meetings on the master plan. So I I hope um, if if we're generally available, um, that we agree this is a good, a good thing to end. You know, it's uh, nine o'clock. I know it's been a long, long evening. So let's, let's um, let's commit to a a meeting on the eighteenth um, to continue uh, this topic and um, the next uh, four items as well. Um, but would would you give us, let's put a little, little presentation on on the the material you put together for us tonight.
Sure, okay. So I'll just start out here on page one. So thi- this memo is covering uh, recommendations one through four. Uh, so that's multifamily housing in our commercial districts, mixed use in our commercial districts, taller buildings in core commercial. And then lastly, accessory dwelling units. So uh, number four, we're getting in, we're kind of transitioning into the residential conver- residential zoning district conversation. And then the subsequent actions would would uh, get into those districts specifically. And and one, one thing I want to mention on on the first page is kind of the preface, the the where we're adding in these new buildings and land uses. Um, the question, and we just had, talked about this during the ADU conversation, um, permitted uses versus special land uses. So uh, you, as we add in, you, like, let's, for instance, multifamily in general commercial or mixed use building in general commercial. Should they be permitted or special land use? And you don't have to answer that now, but I think that's something that we should be thinking about. You permitted uses, that that, we know that if you meet the requirements, it's going to be approved. Um, special land use, you have a bit more discretion, but at the same time, that goes through a much longer process, public hearing here, and it goes all the way up to the council. Um, now, you you may want to keep that special land use option for for projects that would be, you know, have a higher impact. But you, when we get in, start talking about other things or even ADUs, I think those should certainly be permitted rather than special. So just just keep that in mind a- as we go through. I I've started off by making recommendations that most are are permitted. And especially right now, because th- these are commercial districts as well. And we said from the beginning that there's, this is the, there's a lower barrier to entry to allow for multifamily in more density downtown and commercial districts. Because these are areas that are already planned for density and intensity. So um, keep that in mind, i- but if you're ever not quite comfortable with a use, can always classify it as special. Uh, so first, so then we we move into definitions on bottom of page one and then to page two. So again, I, we, I wanted to kind of start off with with a clear understanding of of and new definitions for for ordinance. So you know, dwelling, dwelling unit, um, the only non-use definition is maximum building width. Uh, which I, that's actually one of the um, requirements that I were suggesting for the east side of Pine Street. Uh, to be able to to maintain waterfront views. I wonder, there's a sixty percent um, maximum building width, so we we actually need to define that. So that's the, uh, we'll talk about it a little bit later, but uh, everything else though is mixed use building, multiple family attached dwelling, multiple family apartment dwelling, single family dwelling and two-family dwelling. So um, you know, we're we're slightly adjusting some of these names and then including uh, improved definitions and sometimes new definitions as well, just to cover all of our housing types uh, in this uh, new ordinance. Um, then getting into to the the service zoning district, um, for for service, general commercial and core commercial. I I did tune up all of the statements of, the the statement of purpose and the intent statements. Um, so that uh, they all are a little bit different, but the same theme i- is maintained. And then I did highlight everything that has to do with with residential or mixed use. So um, anytime you you're making changes to the ordinance, especially when adding new uses, you you want to ensure that your your intent statement is reflecting those new types of uses. And and also double checked all these statements against the the master plan, future land use category. So so I wanted to make sure like, where we're saying in in the master plan, um, I think we referred to traditional, I forget with the downtown district in. But I I looked at the future land use description for downtown in the master plan versus core commercial in in the zoning text. I want to make sure that those, um, the language was consistent. So I I saw some opportunities to to um, wordsmith those intent statements a bit. So then when we get into the service district, the the principal permitted uses, I suggest adding accessory dwelling unit, which is accessory to commercial use. So that that goes back to the conversation earlier about channel side. So we do allow for accessory dwelling units already um, in general commercial in our industrial districts. So I'm suggesting that we we allow that in service as well. Um, then we add mixed use building and multiple family apartment dwelling. So yeah, the 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 service district is, again, that is a little bit more of an in in industrial type district than it's kind of a hybrid district between our downtown core commercial and our LI district. So it's, you know, there are a lot, you know, it it, a lot of industrial type service businesses there. So the mixed use building and multiple family are are recommended to be added there. Um, but in terms of the building and dimensional requirements which follow, um, I I wanted to be a little bit, a little bit more of a lighter touch. I I didn't feel like we had to to hold those types of buildings to to as, you know, as as high design standards as what we'd find in 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 core commercial. Because it's, it's, um, you know, they're further back, they're they're not on our main, you know, downtown corridor like like Pine Street. Uh, but for here, so so I don't think we need any sort of transparency requirements in service. For all of these, we do need to to remove the landscaping requirements for front yards, because we're drawing buildings a lot closer to the road. And this is a downtown area as well. So all of these things, wha- what I've done with the dimensional building requirements, I had to go through and see what what types of requirements are going to stand in our way if we're adding these new uses. So front yard landscaping, you know, parking lot landscaping, I I I think we need to be, as much as I I love parking lot landscaping, canopy trees in parking lots, screening, buffering. But when we're looking at infill projects downtown, the more trees and and landscape islands that we're adding, it it's very, very inefficient use. So so a lot of codes for downtown areas, especially like this, just don't have the significant planting requirements for front yards and parking lots, because there's not a lot of room to work with. So so I'm suggesting that we 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 lighten up on some of our landscaping requirements there. The, uh, also for the the parking requirements overall, um, this is pretty common in downtown areas that you you also um, loosen up on parking requirements. Um, so that, or or include a a reduction or waiver, so that, you know, you you're saying, yeah, we want, we want this great multifamily building downtown, but there's just no room for all this parking onsite. So we we could allow for um, setbacks and waivers if if parking is accommodated. So like, they may have a restriction that they only allow one car per per unit, they may, they may tell you that. Or or we, we may have more on-street parking by the time something comes in. Um, there may be a a city lot, you know, there might be multiple ways that parking can be accommodated. Um, or it it, they may just say, hey, in our types of residents, you know, we we see an average of one point two five cars per unit and your requirement is one point five, we'd like a reduction based on our experience in this field. So it, I'd like to give us a little bit of flexibility so that we have this great project, but they can't meet parking, so it doesn't happen.
I think that sounds good. I think we want to try to be, uh, as we look at these changes, we want to be practical and hope that uh, down the line, projects will come in with the additional um, flexibility that we're, we're trying to allow.
Fair. Quick question before we move on from service. David, could you describe what uh, transparency requirements are?
Sure, uh, the transparency requirements are are the, really the uh, the amount of windows and doors on the front of a building. So um, I I think we do are, do incorporate that in in the core commercial a few pages down. Um, it, like, for instance, thirty-three to eighty percent visibility on a ground floor and then upper floors, it's a, it's not as much. So uh, and that's something that we like to see in 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 downtown districts on main streets. And so there's, you know, this window shopping, there's, you can see inside a building, see people having fun, having dinner or shopping. So uh, but in the service district, I just don't think that's, that's necessary. It's, that's not quite the the intent of that district.
Thank you.
Um, and then in terms of the dimensional requirements, um, I I think we should reduce the front setback uh, down to to zero. It definitely for these new building types, and then I mentioned, or all buildings. Um, so it's something that we, that that's a question to 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 answer either tonight or a future date. Uh, I think for for sure, we we need to accommodate for, you know, lesser or no setback, front setback for these new types of residential products, but may want to just allow, ha- have the same for for others as well. Um, I have no issues with a side setback of ten feet. Um, the the rear setback, um, I think should be reduced from thirty to fifteen feet. Again, we we, that could be for these new building types or all buildings. But I just want to note those as uh, as changes as well. Okay, then then moving into to commercial zoning districts, so commercial means both um, general or core commercial and general commercial. So tuned up those intent statements, and then scrolling down to permitted and special land use. So that, this this ta- this is in table form in in the zoning ordinance, so that's why it's permitted and special. So um, whereas the other one was just permitted uses. But but within that table for core commercial, um, suggesting adding accessory dwelling unit, mixed use building, um, multiple family attached dwelling and multiple family apartment dwelling. So I I'm stressing that all of those, we start, you consider those as permitted uses rather than special. And then for multiple family attached dwelling, so uh, go back to the definition, those are the side-by-side townhouse type products. Um, I suggested those those, those um, not front Pine Street in in core commercial, because you, that's, and it it, and maybe that's too prescriptive. But I think the, on on Pine Street, we we should really focus on commercial buildings, mixed use and multifamily. Whereas uh, townhouses may, might be more oriented toward toward the side streets or the back streets in the downtown area. So um, but but I get it, that that's, it's, that's not a, any sort of deal killer for me. I think one of the themes that we had in our previous conversations is to leave things open. You know, development community can tell us what they, what they wanted, they like to do here and and if it's a use that we allow. You know, they'll, they'll make every effort to do it, so. So again, uh, I still think Pine Street should still be more of a kind of a downtown district where it is, you know, multifamily or mixed use or or commercial buildings and and not necessarily that, you know, a pure residential townhouse type. Now, on your, on your street scape, but.
David, if you have uh, eight townhouses built together, does that, is that more what we're looking for downtown as opposed to one single freestanding?
Yeah, it would be, uh, based on the new definitions, um, the multiple family attached dwelling is going to be uh, three or more. So three or more side-by-side, whereas a a two-family is going to be specifically called out as two-family, either side-by-side or stacked. You could have stacked two-family. So so this would be um, um, three or more side-by-side.
Thank you.
And then we we move into to general commercial, um, so the the, these are really at, this, really. Um so the the these are really at this really same recommendations except for um I I don't think we need to be as prescriptive on townhouses in general commercials, that's Lepink's and then the corner of Van Wagner and 174.
Are you on page six?
Uh top, still on the top of page five.
Okay, thank you.
And then so so really a lot of the same same types of products for general commercial. And then this is the the last two bullets under general commercial were concerning uh self-storage and commercial uh storage suites. And and we we said we we might want to consider removing those from general commercial. Um just so because we do have a lot in, you know, we we this is a a housing-focused effort. So that that's uh something that you might want to consider, either removing those from general commercial altogether, or maybe we just say at at the at uh Van Wagner, uh those lots up up at, you know, the northern part of the city, maybe that's where we we don't allow them. Um they 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 are in general, uh they are a more industrial product in in general. Um I I know we added them in in recent years to general commercial through a zoning text amendment. But I I guess the question is, do we want to want to see those continue to proliferate in general commercial areas where we have other priorities now?
No.
Okay, um then moving further down page five, uh core commercial, uh I think we need to have the transparency requirements. Then we have um the the one question I have here is um well, for for the uh specific facade frontage elements, um we we do actually have architectural requirements. As you know, we we every now and then we waive them on buildings if 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 they have an alternative design or if it's more of an industrial area, uh we have waived those, so we actually have some some decent standards, uh but we could be a little bit more pres- prescriptive on entryways and front-facing porches um in that section of the ordinance, uh just for core commercial. So I think that's the one district where where if anywhere, we could be a a little bit more prescript- prescriptive on the look and design of the building. So I I think we could tune up section 560H a bit there just for core commercial. And and again, like we said, we don't want to be too prescriptive, but um I at least want to just take a a shot at that just to see what you think uh for that section. And then i- i- and if we don't want to, if we feel like it's too much, we can strike it.
Okay.
So similar landscaping, uh the reduction for for parking. We similar to the previous service district, we'd have to do that. And then in this district as well, um I think we need to be uh more prescriptive prescriptive about where parking lots go. So I don't think they should be um in the in the front yard of of non-waterfront lots. So like I said, the idea would be that the building is the the focal point of a lot and then your parking goes to the side or rear. But on the the east side of Pine, I mentioned that this is, you know, non-waterfront lots, I don't think that's the case. I think you're you're going to probably have parking in front of those buildings because those buildings are probably going to be more oriented toward the water. So I thi- I think we have a parking location restriction, it should not be for waterfront lots. Um I I mentioned s- some setback adjustments. Uh reducing the front setback down to zero for for all these new buildings that we're adding in. And then I asked the same question, or for all buildings, so. I I think maybe we, yeah, I think in 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 general, like we should probably apply it to all buildings. I wouldn't want just these new products to be able to be drawn to the road where where just a retail building couldn't. I I think that might look a little bit destroying it if we're if we're doing that, so.
Yes, sounds good.
All buildings. And then the to-be-discussed item that I think you said that was, I I I punted on that a bit again. I I just want to confirm again, we we uh adding four-story mixed-use and four-story multiple-family buildings as special land uses or as PUD in core commercial. Uh we we the more we looked at those four-story buildings in in the slides from previous meetings, I think we all started to get a little bit nervous about the Falcon scale. Um and just want to ask a question one more time because I didn't go back and watch the video, but would would you be interested at all in a four-story if it was special land use or a PUD to where we we'd have a little bit more control over that design and that and that overall look and feel? Or or do we just want to say, hey, three stories is where we're going to keep it?
We don't have a three-story building.
Oh, which is oh, in terms of what you have now?
Yeah, sorry.
Yep, yep. Probably right, we we don't have a
There is there is a three-story house in the city, as long as it doesn't exceed thirty-five feet.
But 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 not a lot of commercial or multifamily at all.
Almost everything in Spring Lake Village is three-story max, probably.
I think the new one Windsor Place is going to be three-story, yeah, sorry.
Um the 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 new apartment complex is is four stories, but yeah, everything downtown, I think those newer ones are all the new buildings are three, yep. Right near Village Hall.
So I'll just say the uh weren't the pictures you showed us um of potential four-story buildings, weren't they four stories or am I mistaken?
Yes, there there were some that were four-story pictures, and I think my my general recollection was that we were less confident about four stories and and we'd always talked about you even with with back when we had a session with Roger, that you know, we we could always go up downtown. But um I think the more we looked at some of those pictures, we thought they might be a little bit out of out of scale for for our core commercial area. Um but do we want to leave ourselves some flexibility to 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 hear a proposal from a developer? If if they're meeting our goals and they can do it in a way that makes sense and looks good, is that something we would consider?
Well, I I I want to find consensus, but uh maybe I'm a little ahead of the curve here. Um the 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 drawings, the pictures of product uh uh properties that you showed us, I thought looked very Ferrisburg and very attractive. And you know, it's it's not like we're we're mandating this, we're uh trying to uh open the doors to allow something that could be developed down the line. So uh I I I think I'm hearing some uh some s- some support for three uh story buildings uh and and I don't not sure if there's some way to phrase uh four stories with conditions or more like it depends. I thought part of the wording we used before, Dave, was um if this property um kind of brought the goods, if it was um really um retail on the main floor and uh housing above and so that it was going to be a home run for us.
And and we could, it could always be a a planned unit development as well, and and we don't necessarily need to say anything if it's a planned unit development because by by its nature, planned unit development, you can add, ask for flexibility, they could add, ask for eighteen stories and it's
Wouldn't, but wouldn't any development of that scope be a PUD generally?
Um I think
So we'd have that control.
Yeah, nothing, well, if we say three stories, just that that's the the requirement, the only way you could get more is through a PUD. You could ask for a variance, but you're not going to meet the standards. So PUD is really the only way you could do something taller. And and we don't necessarily need to say anything because a PUD by its nature is is something that allows for flexibility, but we just have to kind of refer back to these conversations if we ever got a four-story PUD proposal.
Andy, do you want to chime in on this, three versus four?
I think my initial thought is to stick closer to three, but like you're saying, with a PUD, we could have flexibility.
I guess the the thing is, is that this isn't a plan for today, it could be five, ten, fifteen years down the road and four stories may fit. You don't want to have somebody not come with a proposal because they're limited to three. And four is the only thing that's economically viable. Um I'd certainly be interested in giving them the option to do that. And you're saying they would through a PUD or whatever, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, of course.
Yep.
So I I I think we're a little bit divided on this, but um I hope we we're giving you some guidance that I think there's comfort um that three would be permitted uh and and we're not quite sure um how to address something uh beyond, say, a a four-story building except for PUD. I guess I I would like to see it uh be um uh permitted uh use if it met all the other requirements, um if I'm saying that right. But but I I you know, we have to see what where there's consensus, so I'll just does anybody else want to chime in on that on this side?
I'm the same as everybody else, I uh there's one residential home, it's like three stories. Whenever you got a drive past, it just sticks out like a sore thumb. And uh which is hard to think about something over that tall being done.
All right, it's um and I I guess I just say it's been a a long night, so let's try to um wrap this up in the next uh ten minutes and um and I I don't want to, I want this to be a quality discussion, I don't want to have anyone falling asleep at the table here.
Okay, yeah, I'm just I'll move into the this the next topic area. The first off, well, general commercial is similar to the other districts, but you know, similar to uh service, we're not being as prescriptive with the um design requirements like transparency and whatnot. Um and then uh the the main rezoning recommendation is going to be the area north of Fifth Street and included the the image there of 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 how this could possibly happen. So the north of Fifth, so that you see, there's a a a great amount of area between Oak and Pine that that's purple, which is core commercial, but north of Fifth, you have a you have about ten lots that really are residential. And and I I don't think that that's really an area that we we want to see complete redevelopments, bulldoze them and put some, you know, commercial structures there. I I think that the character there is resi- residential, and I really think it's an RG3-type zoning district. So um I'd recommend that that we we pursue rezoning those ten lots from CC to RG3 where indicated. And then the remainder, as you go north, um I think that's, you know, I I looked at the aerials, I looked at street view, and I really kind of drew that line intentionally to to where that boundary would be. And then north of that boundary, those, all those businesses really seem to be serv- service district. They're they're really not downtown-type businesses, downtown buildings. It seems it it seems that that could just be absorbed into service district. So wanted to see what your thoughts on on rezoning that area would be.
I think that makes sense.
I think it makes sense.
Just to clarify, why would you change the RG3?
Uh RG RG3 rather than RG2? Um I, well, I wanted to do the the um RG3 is is um allows for the more options for for the attached dwellings. So and and again, we could look at RG2 because we are going to look at at all of our residential zoning districts, but I I still think that area, since we're downzoning it from CC to like an RG3 or 2, that it's still an area that's always been, they've had the right to do something more intense. So maybe if we're we're downzoning a bit, they get the more intense um residential zoning district. So I I think that's something where we're two-family, three-family, four-family, attached-type housing would be fine, or they could just continue on with the single family. But I I think that's a good question, we we can we can look into that a bit more over the next month or two, especially as we make some amendments to RG2 and RG3. But I think in terms of, I think those are the areas that need to change when we're in there. And then lastly, um accessory dwelling units, um so thi- this is for um we talked about accessory dwelling units a lot tonight, but only in the commercial context. This is now where we're transitioning to residential. So this is um attached, you know, on on your house, it could be in your converted attic, it could be in addition to your house, could be a walkout basement. Um or or it's a standalone structure in the backyard. So this is uh where we would add, um well, first, we need to make the the call, you know, do we allow them RD, RG1, RG2, RG3? And we don't necessarily need to answer that right now, but we, because I can, I'm going to build this whole framework just so we can, you know, just check yes or no on all these, w- once we have the 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 language finalized. Uh but we we should really begin to determine, are there any areas that we do not want? Maybe that's the better thing to say, is where do they, are these not appropriate? I think, you know, RD waterfront is probably not where we want to see them, I think there's that's might be difficult area to to put ADUs, but um aside from that, I think it's a, we're a little bit more open. Um but other than that, there's I, this is a pretty standard framework, um so um allowing one per per lot, um we have a a a maximum square footage. Um that's either based at six hundred square feet or fifty percent of livable area that the primary. So we might want to make sure that they remain accessory to the principal use. Um I the occupancy would would, that was a priority of the planning commission, so that the um we didn't want these to be, you know, eat uh just short-term rentals, so it it there should be a the owner of the property should live in one or the other. Um and then or or you could rent the whole lot out under a single contract. So somebody can rent out to a family, you know, they have lived in the main structure and their kids live up back or something. Um and then the short-term lease, a short-term rental prohibited, so it it was very clear that you didn't want ADUs as simply a way to to just establish more short-term rentals, uh that that wasn't really our housing priority. Uh setbacks, so the detached accessory dwelling units um should be be subject to setbacks for accessory buildings, so that's a lesser setback than a principal structure. Some communities do add on stricter setbacks, but I I don't think it makes sense on smaller lots in Ferrisburg. And then I did build in some exemptions, and and I think we're going to get into more of this in the residential conversation. We we do have uh the the lot coverage, and then we have the the maximum size of accessory buildings. Um so I I think we could build in some exceptions so that people can establish these on their lot. And and if you're right, we had a whole conversation about lot coverage earlier, so. And thirty-five percent in general, you know, on on lots of this side, I mean, that that is pretty limiting. And if if someone was already near or or over that, you couldn't put in an ADU. So I think we need to build in some exemptions. So I think we we I want to look in that a little bit more as we do kind of a case, case studies for ADUs, but I think we're going to have to build in some exceptions uh in order to to allow for ADUs on city lots.
Good, I I I think this could be a really a a nice Ferrisburg kind of thing where uh many people would uh take advantage of this for a variety of uses. Um and it uh, you know, could be uh kind of like infill uh development where you know, we have a small town with limited amount of space, so we're saying uh if you want to add on to your existing home, or you want to convert your garage, uh or you have a a large enough backyard to put uh one of these small homes as a uh accessory dwelling unit, that we want to cra- craft something that's flexible enough uh to to make a difference.
Can I make a point, just a comment? There's a number of small lots in the city that are fifty-foot and that are full now. If we don't have something for lot covers, I could see some of these smaller lots being entirely covered.
No, that's um it's a it's a term that's a little hard to um grasp, so I I appreciate you mentioning it. And uh David, you you'll have to have to help us um come up with something that is a fun, you know, is a it weighs uh weighs things from all all angles. I I guess I'm thinking of, you know, small homes on big lots where there's room for this uh and not the other end of the scale, s- s- small lots that are already built up.
Yeah, and I think it's a really good point, I think we need to look at some uh case studies, so so I'm I'm going to pull a couple lots that are are of that nature, and then look at some other lots and just say, okay, how would we 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 place a detached ADU on this property and what what would it look like, what's the result? And and maybe, you know, there there should be some sites where you just can't put ten pounds in a five-pound bag, so it's just So it's just that, that, that we want, we don't want to just open up to where we're going to make undesirable situations. So I, I think that's, we're going to find a balance somewhere. But I think we, we may need to look at allowing some flexibility for ADUs. But that, that, I'm going to study that a bit more as well. Aside from that, the rest of it's not really a thing you need to mention now. And then the only other item I wanted to mention, as we continue to look at these housing recommendations, I noticed that Article 4 is kind of flawed in my opinion. I really don't like when ordinances are like this where you have a, a special land use chapter, which is, which is, you know, addresses the process and standards for considering special land uses. And then special land use requirements. So this, this assumes that every single use that has specific requirements is a special land use. And we're saying, well, we might want to allow for ADUs as permitted uses. So where do we put those specific requirements? So I, I just like to separate those out. You have your special land use chapter which says, here's your process, here are your standards. That, that's a single chapter. Then you have a chapter that just says specific use requirements. So any use regardless of if it's permitted or special, they might have requirements. And, and that should have no bearing on whether it's permitted or special. So as we go through this process, I suggest that we, we just break out that, that chapter into two.
David, at some point, can you remind the commission, what are the, what are the four recommendations? I think it's three or four that we haven't started investigating yet.
Ah, yes. Oh, sorry about that, I'm just, here it is. Okay, so the, the first four, and then the next ones are going to be attached, attached housing in RG1 and RG2. Then we are looking at lot sizes and width in all residential zoning districts to match existing context. Reduction of lot sizes and lot width for attached housing such as duplex. That's where anytime you want to add like an attached unit, your lot size doubles. So we don't want to do that. Incentives for affordable and attainable housing through zoning flexibility or PUD modifications. So that's going to be primarily PUD. And then streamlined processes to shorten review timeframes, clear expectations. So that's going to be your PUD as well as changing certain uses from special to permitted. And then reassess other requirements for residential dwellings. That's going to be like, one example is, is the mandatory garage requirement. There might be some others like minimum area of a house, so. So I'll look, that's my next assessment, which I'll begin to report on that either at our special meeting or, or the next one.
Good, thank you. Questions commissioners? It's been a very productive discussion. Thank you very much, David.
I'm sure, I just want to mention one thing. Probably one of the toughest parts of this project is to figure out how this all fits in the ordinance. So I, I would have preferred to show you exactly, that's why this is almost for me, I, I, I wanted to list this all out as in identifying the sections and showing you where it's going to go. But that, that was actually a kind of an involved effort because this ordinance is not structured in a way that really accommodates for residential standards in these commercial districts. Because like you have a table that's, here are your requirements that are only applicable to commercial buildings. So it, it's, just thinking about how to structure this in this type of code has been a little bit of a challenge. So I, I wanted to have a little bit more, well, this is, that, that's the reason why I, I outlined this memo just more of like a, here's what we're going to do and where, but not quite show it to you yet because it's, it's hard enough to find out, how am I going to plug this all into an existing ordinance that wasn't really written for this type of housing effort? So that's, that's in the background, that's my headache, that's not for you to worry about, but you'll, you'll see what I'm talking about at some point.
Yes. Public comments? Don't see anybody here. Zoning administrative report or report? Chairman report, no report? Member reports?
No report? No report.
No report.
No report.
Congratulations on your reelection, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
So next, next meeting, I think we agreed on a, a special meeting on, on November 18th.
Shared time? Seven?
Yes, yes, what is the time?
Seven PM.
Will you be able to do both meetings Craig or what are you planning on?
Well, Gary's in the same position, he is on duty reserve board as well. So we'll talk to the duty reserve board and see if we can move up that meeting a little bit.
Oh, okay. Jordan, did you think it was six? I'm sorry, I just, I saw you.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I can.
You mentioned that your son.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to respect that.
And Craig, two members aren't here tonight, so we'll, we'll leave it at seven o'clock. But keep, keep us posted if, if we need to fine tune it some more.
Okay.
All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, everybody.
You bet.
Great job.